Good evening. This is Tuesday, May 13th, 2025. This is a regular meeting of our planning commission. We have quite a few things on our agenda, so we'll get started with our road call.
Yes, indeed. Stiles.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Zaremski.
Here.
Osterholm.
Here.
Also present is Planning and Economic Development Director Meg Leatherman, Village Solicitor Amy Blankenship, Village Manager Johnny Burns. And we are expecting Carmen Brown any moment.
Okay. And our review of our agenda, any changes anybody has? I think if we have any changes, Judy will not be happy. So we'll leave it the way it is. We'll go ahead with the review of the March 4th meeting, which was our Windsor work session. And does anyone have any changes to it? If there are no changes, do we have a motion for approval?
A motion for approval, second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, then, our next one is the minutes of the March 11th regular meeting. I do have a change on page three. And go down to the about middle where it says Stiles responded that council may choose not to address the matter and stated that she is unwilling to follow staff's recommendations for this reason. I do not believe I said that I was unwilling to follow staffs. I think what I said was I do not support the outside consultant's conclusion.
Okay.
And any other changes? Is there a motion to approve with that change?
I'll make a motion to approve the change.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we have finished with our minutes. Then we will move on to, we had a number of communications. And I apologize right now if I mispronounced your name, because I'm not real good with names. But we had a letter from Tom Dingernhardt.
Dingernhardt.
Dingernhardt. Sorry, right off the bat. There was a petition objecting to Windsor Union PUD, a letter from Franklin Hallie, a letter from Chris Pfeifer, a letter from Lisa Abel, a letter from Kim Kulaasa, and a letter from Tim Collin. So we have those. And we will probably mention them when we get down to each public hearing, is my assumption. So then we will go on to our reports. So Active Transportation Committee hearing, do we have anything?
Yeah. I have two items. One, tomorrow, May 14th, is Bike Walk to School Day with a celebration at Mills Lawn Elementary School happening later in the day from 2:00 to 4:00. And that the Active Transport Team has been involved in organizing and staffing. There'll be a variety of activities and raffle prizes for all the schoolchildren. Second is, I attended an ODOT-sponsored statewide Active Transport Conference on October 29th and 30th at Ohio State University in Columbus. Conference started with an introduction by the ODOT Director and a keynote speaker was Mayor Justin Bibb from Cleveland, Ohio, who's quite dynamic and an inspirational speaker. Presentations and workshops spanned projects from small villages up to larger cities and ranged in scope from projects ranging from $25,000 to $500 million. It was very impressive. Yes, $500 million. Presentations and panel discussions also highlighted the latest planning approaches associated with both pedestrian and bicycle safety. Once I organize my notes, because this is just a week or so ago, and review with the Active Transport Team, there'll likely be a number of suggestions concerning bicycle infrastructure presented to the village, which might not surprise anybody. As Yellow Springs continues to become a recognized bicycling destination, gaps in bicycling infrastructure become more apparent. So that's what I have.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you.
And can you pass this?
Nice to have a report.
Pass this down to Judy, please.
Okay. And I saw yesterday a group of, I think they were high school students, all on bikes. In the morning, I was walking my dogs back to the house and probably 30 of them passed.
Could be. I'm not sure. Yes. Last week and this week, there's a bit of bicycle activity among the school kids and all sorts of various grades.
Okay. And do we have a council report, Carmen?
Nothing currently.
Okay. Okay, the next part we have is called citizens' comments. And this is for if you are not going to speak at one of the public hearings, which I'm assuming most of you are here for a public hearing. But if you have something that is not on our agenda and you want to talk about it now, now is your opportunity. Okay, that also no one. Okay, now we're getting ready to move into our public hearings. And what I would like to do, or not what I'd like to do, but what I need to do is I need to ask everybody who thinks you're going to testify, I need you to stand up because I need to swear you in. So everybody, probably everyone should stand up. Now, if you're from Windsor.
Yes.
That you should stand up too. Everybody who's going to speak, stand up. And even if you don't think you're going to speak, stand up because you may decide to speak. Okay. And so you can all affirm this. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in matters before this board?
I did.
Okay, great. Yes, thank you. Now you may sit down. So now, when you come up for a public hearing then, I am going to ask you to give your name, to give your address, and I will ask you if you did swear in. And we're doing this for our record so that we have it. So our first item of business is the public hearing regarding the conditional use for Kelsey Cooley on behalf of Johnny and Tracy Cooley, property owners who submitted a conditional use application for professional office use at 213 North Winter Street. And so I will ask Meg to.
All right. Thank you. All right, Meg Leatherman, Planning and Economic Development Director. This student stated is a conditional use application submitted by Kelsey Cooley, who is the daughter of the property owners, John and Tracy Cooley, and authorized the dismissal of this. The property is located at 213 North Winter Street and is in the RB or medium-density residential zone. And just some housekeeping items that I normally always go through. You guys are probably used to. But also wanted to point out, the planning commission is the final decision maker for this application. Adjoining property owners were mailed a notice on April 24th, 2025. Signs were posted on the property May 2nd, 2025. A notice was published in the paper on May 2nd as well. A staff report was prepared that outlines applicable village zoning code and was provided to the planning commission on May 9th. And it was also posted on our website on May 9th. So the commissioners have had a chance to look at that. The applicant, Kelsey Cooley, is here tonight. And she would like to operate a professional law office out of the existing structure that's on the property. Right now is a single-family dwelling. No one's living in it. But she would like to convert it into professional law office. She has a primary residence in Yellow Springs, but plans to walk to work. And she'll speak more to her intent about this. But the code allows this use, the conditional use through the zoning code, as long as the planning commission ensures that any negative impacts associated with it would be mitigated through conditions of approval on the conditional use. And through this request also, the planning commission has the authority and is one of the requests of the applicant to modify the parking standards. So the off-street parking requires five spaces and she's asking for two. The only construction proposed with this application is associated with the off-street parking lot. The structure would remain exactly the same, except for maybe some minor aesthetic enhancements. She maybe could speak to that more. And also maybe a sign. That requires another sign application with us. So everything will remain the same. There will be no construction except for the two spaces of off-street parking that she proposes to construct. Okay. To summarize the operation, as I understand it, there's a total of two employees, would be one attorney and one receptionist. The hours of operation would be Monday through Friday, 8:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Saturdays, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And just as an estimate, I mean, she just gave us an estimate of the number of clients potentially that she could have about one an hour if she was at max capacity. So that's what was included in the documentation. The staff report was basically the total maximum if she met with one client per hour. During those operating hours, it equates to 44 clients a week. So regarding more specifically the off-street parking, the code requires on a minimum five off-street spaces for this type of use. And the applicant's proposing two, again. And the code does allow for the planning commission to reduce the total parking space requirements for any use based on the finding that other forms of travel are available and likely to be used. And that the site design incorporates bicycle parking facilities and pedestrian connections. And we find, the applicant finds in my staff report, I state this, that they're going to provide a bicycle parking rack and that there is available on-street parking on Winter Street and that there are existing sidewalks for pedestrian connectivity. There is a, on the Cliff Street where they want to place the access to the parking lot, there is a stormwater retention, resistant storm drain there that's above ground, but it's a natural flow. They will have to make sure that stormwater can still travel across the new driveway access. And so I did put a condition of approval for a stormwater mitigation plan to be approved prior to the use being commenced. So I'm recommending approval with four conditions. One, and a lot of them are based on what I just described. So the first condition being a bicycle rack be provided per the specifications in our code. The second condition of approval is that prior to commencement of the office use, construct the parking lot for the two off-street parking spaces. Prior to sign installation, obtain sign approval. And prior to commencing the office use, obtain village approval of a stormwater mitigation plan.
Is this where we will ask you questions? Should we do it now? I have a question based on the letter from Lisa Abel. And I know Lisa, she'll probably talk during the public hearing. But in Lisa's letter, she says that three of the neighbors have vacation rentals. Are you aware of any of those?
Yes. Yes, they're all are.
Are they transient guest lodging?
Yes, and I.
How can we have three that close? Because that's against our code.
Correct. They were pre-existing before the code was in place.
Oh.
Yes.
Because that's exactly what we wanted to prevent. A neighborhood of vacation rentals.
So I have a question. The way that conditional approval would work for this, would the conditional approval solely be for this particular business? What if, what if at some point they went somewhere else and that building then got used for another commercial use? Would it need to come here again? Or is the approval for commercial use?
It is specifically for a professional law office.
Okay.
Use.
Yeah.
So commercial is different than office use, I will say.
Okay, yeah.
That's my clarifying point on that.
So could it be then used for a different office scenario under this umbrella?
Potentially.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, am I being right? Our attorney.
On what? On whether?
If another business want to go in there, another office use.
But let's say at some point they did change and an accounting firm wanted to go in there. Would it still, would the approval still transfer then?
You could condition the conditional use specifically to this.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it change, wouldn't they have to come back if it changed ownership?
Not technically.
Okay.
A conditional use runs with the land. So if you wanted to add a condition to make it specific to a professional law office, we could do that.
Okay. So here's, but here's where I was really going with this. Right now, I'm familiar with this house. It came up a couple of years ago for a different usage that of course never occurred. But as opposed to, you know, having a professional office that you got two rooms somewhere and that's it. This is, this is a modest-sized house. And right now, as you say, there's just two employees, an attorney, a receptionist. Conceivably, the practice can grow. You could get, you know, another attorney, a second, a third attorney, paralegal, who knows what. And, and the building, the house is large enough to accommodate a larger practice, you know, and not just a single, you know, sole use. And the only.
I would suggest you could make conditions that state the number of employees.
Yeah.
I mean, if there.
But the only, the only thing I'm bringing that up about is the reduction in parking. You know, the request to go from five down to two. Conceivably, if the practice grows a little bit, there might be just more transport back and forth. And I'm concerned.
They'd have to come back and expand their parking. They only got two spots.
Well, no. If, if, if the practice grew, you know, with another attorney and more employees, they would not need to come back to us because it's still a law office.
Unless we made that a condition.
That or upfront require more than just two parking spaces. That's what I wanted to open up a little discussion about. Because the code requires five. And?
Okay, let's go ahead and hear from the applicant and then we can ask some more questions. And if you would state your name and your address and you were sworn in, is that correct?
Yes, I was.
Okay.
So I'm Kelsey Cooley. I live at 211 Gardendale Drive, which is right on the corner from my parents, who live at 218 Northwood and are the owners of 213 North Winter. I have read the Planning and Economic Development Director's report and I agree with all of her findings. Also, I kind of request that any no-voting members provide a basis for their denial of my conditional use request so their rationale is preserved in the record. I'm happy to address any questions and concerns. And just while it's fresh in my mind, I know you were talking about wanting to keep five. The reason why I'm requesting it down to two is there is a beautiful magnolia tree.
Yeah.
On that property. And so I'm concerned that if we expanded out more, that that could interfere with that tree. And there's also two off-street parking right in front of the building. And I can also structure, I mean, the eight clients, one per hour was a maximum amount. But as an attorney, ideally, I can, I would have time for drafting, researching. I would never want my schedule to be client, 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 client. So I can stagger it, stagger my schedule so that the use is appropriate with who I'm seeing. And then I know that, Lisa, I don't know. I know your face.
Hi.
I understand you're.
So if you could just address, just planning commission, please.
Okay, yes, sorry. I understand the concerns and frustration with three neighbors being turned into vacation rentals. I will be there Monday through Friday for 10 hours and five hours every Saturday. I've been told I'm very friendly. I think I'm friendly. And I want you to know that I will be a constant and stable presence at the property. Is there any, I know there was another concern requesting an explanation as to why the house in the middle of a residential neighborhood is the best choice for private office space. The fact that my parents own the property is pretty crucial. And I've calculated that based on that, along with other, my business judgment, my operating and overhead expenses will be very low, which is crucial to the success of any startup business. Also, given the type of law I want to practice, which includes what is not limited to estate planning, wills, trusts, guardianships, adoptions, small business advisement, and bankruptcies, I want my law office to feel inviting, nonjudgmental, and not intimidating. I know I can create something really special at 213 North Winter that will serve the needs of this community. And welcome to address any other concerns or questions.
Does anyone have any questions for?
Do you have any plans to expand your business? I mean, you're just starting this business.
Yes, correct. No, not at this time. And I will follow the conditions that you had understood and tracking the concerns and.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I mean, would, could we put something in there about? I don't know what it would be, you know, that if, I mean, because I look at this, the picture of Cliff Street and Walnut or Winter Street there and, you know, at least from the satellite view, it doesn't look like there's a whole lot of cars, you know, even just, I mean, it looks like the, you know, except for probably Street Fair Day. That, you know, probably not a whole lot of, you know, that. If you had 10 people, you probably, they'd probably be okay, you know, so.
Oh, if I had 10 employees, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. It's just, there's places to, you know, lots of places to park.
Yeah, people like to park in the yard on Street Fair Day. That side of that.
I think from.
Any other questions for her?
Okay, not a question. Well, actually, a question. My sense of, you know, I live around the corner from there, is that there would be room, east of that tree, there would be room for three parking, car parking spots, I think.
Sorry, where?
On Cliff Street.
Oh, on the side of the street?
Yeah, on the, on the side of the property towards Walnut. You know, as you're looking at the picture, on the right side of your property.
Right here, on Cliff Street?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, yeah, people can park on the side.
But I'm thinking there would be room for three cars there. I'm just thinking from my recollection.
Oh, okay, yeah. But the code requires that it would be five onsite. So if they were on the side, that's how I interpret the code. If they were on Cliff Street in the yard, that doesn't count as towards my five.
You're thinking about that the parking area could.
In the yard.
Between the, like, miller tree and your property line.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To the east, that you would have enough space to put three spots.
That you could have three pull-in spots in the backyard there.
I'm not necess, yeah, I'll look into it. But I know there's the right-of-way concern too. Like, right there on that side of the property.
Okay, anyway.
Okay, any other questions for her? Okay, thank you. You can sit down then. So at this point, we'll go ahead with our public hearing. So anybody who wants to come forward and talk, if you will state your name, your address, and acknowledge that you've been sworn in. And you will be limited to two minutes.
Hi, I'm Lisa Abel and I live at 114 North Winter Street. And I'm a proponent of businesses. I'm a proponent of business expansion and development. Been on the Yellow Springs Development Corp. for several years. So this isn't about that. It's really about holding the line literally between neighborhood family dwellings and business. We have space downtown. We have space in some of the other business areas. And I just feel it's unfortunate that conditional use would supersede current zoning and future land use plans in this instance. So that's just my, my position is keep the neighborhood as single-family or family units. Put business where business is already zoned.
Thank you, Lisa. Anybody else would like to speak? If not, then I will close the public hearing. Other questions for Meg? How are people feeling? Are you ready to vote on this? Are you wanting, does somebody want to make a motion to approve?
Before that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Before, before you do that, just so we don't get too far into the weeds, did, did anyone want to add conditions to the conditions listed?
There are the conditions and that's.
I don't want to expand any conditions other than what's being asked for.
There are four conditions that Meg has recommended.
So the applicant has stated the number of employees. You could condition the number of employees as stated in order to feel better about the parking issue. If you feel fine about the parking issue, that matters less. This is, this is the one shot you've got to lay it out.
Okay.
Could we, just, could we make it at a condition that it would strictly be for her law office? And that if, so that if, if she sold the building and somebody else wanted to use it as an office, they would have to come back? Or if she, I mean, I suppose it's, you know, she wants to become a, something wants to become an accountant, that's fine too, but it's, you know.
My, my concern isn't necessarily about who owns it or who's working in it, whatever. It's just the size of whatever's in there that grows more. But I can't think of any reasonable way to not have a bulky.
Well, we could say, we can, we can condition it on like four employees.
Yeah, there's, you could set a condition to say this, this business will employ a maximum of.
If it expands.
Three employees, period.
Yeah, and it would be to come back specifically to dress parking? Off-road parking?
Well, that does kind of address parking. Because one of the issues that you had was, what if there are more employees and therefore more cars? If you set the condition that you're limiting the number of employees, you've also then mitigated the potential parking issue.
So do we want to have, I would like to have a condition on the number of employees. A condition of a maximum of four employees.
Okay. Because that indirectly sort of addresses the parking thing and.
Well, and then a condition that it is for her law office. And that if it's, because she could still, her parents could still own it and she decides to move out. And I would think if somebody else is going to move in there, they should have to come back. Okay.
Really quickly, let's talk about number four of Megan's recommendation, which was.
The stormwater mitigation.
Plan. So I'd like to add that.
Well, we.
Oh, that's.
Those, those conditions are included.
Yeah.
So I move approval with six conditions. Provide one bike rack for specifications. Prior to commencement of the office use, construct two off-street parking spaces. Three, prior to installation of any sign, they obtain, she would obtain the sign permit approval. Four, prior to commencement of office use, obtain village approval of a stormwater mitigation plan. And five, a maximum of four employees. And six, that it is, this condition is for her law, law office only.
So I've got that as business will employ a maximum of four employees onsite. So, I've got that as, business will employ a maximum of four employees onsite.
Onsite.
And that the use is conditioned for law office as owned and operated by Ms. Cooley. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So, if it grows by one more, then she has to come back? Like, say that business is booming and there's five employees?
Yes.
Well, it's only got two right now.
Well, I'm, this is, yeah, okay.
Is there a second on-
One of them could work from home.
We, we need to have a second on the, before we-
I'll second.
Okay. So now, other discussion on it. Just removed and seconded. Okay, if not, then Judy, let's go ahead and vote.
All right, Osterholm.
Pass, yes.
Green.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Zaremski.
Yes.
Stiles.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll email you the, I'll email the final approval of the conditions. Our next public hearing is what probably many people have come for.
Actually, I don't know.
Okay. Is the preliminary development plan for the planned unit development. On behalf of Windsor and Antioch Corporation, which is the property owner, has submitted an application for a PUD for 43 units of multifamily development at 150 East South College Street. Meg, would you like to talk about it?
All right, thank you. Yes, this is a preliminary development plan for a planned unit development, and I'll use probably the term PUD a lot, stands for planned unit development. It is a series, a step in a series of various public meetings. A lot of you have been involved with some of the pre-application and work session meetings, and there are even subsequent meetings after this meeting to move the application and process through. As Susan mentioned, the property owner is on this one Antioch College Corporation still. They authorized the middle of this application. Technically, the property is located at 150 East South College Street, and it's in the E1 or educational institution zone. For this application, so the preliminary plan for PUD, the planning commission is the recommending body for this application, so you make a recommendation, and then it moves on to village council, regardless of the decision for a first reading and a second reading, because this is also grouped with a rezone applic-, to PUD. Adjoining property owners will mail the notice on April 21st, 2025. Signs were posted on the property on May 2nd, 2025. And also, the Yellow Springs newspaper published notice on May 2nd, 2025. A staff report was prepared that outlines applicable village code, which was provided to the planning commission and posted on our website on May 9th. So, we are 150 East South College, which is, there's 11 different parcels as part of this. It's really small, I don't know the reason why, but there's 11 small parcels that are part of this application. On it today exists the Kettering Building, what's commonly known as the Kettering Building. And the applicant would like to convert the existing structure into 43-unit multifamily residential project, so they'd be renovating the interior space. The existing structure and the building footprint would remain exactly the same. They do plan to demolish the rear small garage in the back, towards the rear of the lot. It's pretty dilapidated itself, and so they do plan on demoing that as part of this. But the rest of the development footprint, so the, the open space, the, the parking area, the sidewalks, would all remain in the same location. They do, they have committed to community garden and gathering area for proposed outdoor amenities. So, again, it's, it's 43 multifamily, renovating the existing building, which was built in about 1950. And they do plan to have an age restriction of 55 and over for these apartments. And they're probably, restate this, they have a presentation, they're going to say after this, after I do my overview, but I believe this one would have an elevator, does plan to have an elevator. So, there is a lot of content with a PUD, and it's not necessarily like really direct to read the code and know exactly what's going on, but I'm going to summarize some of the modification requests and density. If I don't highlight something that you guys have specific questions about, feel free to ask me after. I know you will. I remember my first day, Judy told me that. You don't have to tell them to ask questions. And I was like, oh, okay. I don't know, makes me feel better. So, yeah, it's a lot of content, and I'm just going to summarize some things, but, you know, I know you guys have, I see Susan has all kinds of notes on her report, so I know you guys have read through this in detail. So, the PUD section of our code allows deviations from certain dimensional standards, as long as the applicant commits to having certain amenities. And the applicant has committed to certain amenities, and therefore requests deviations from the dimensional standards for off-street parking. For this one, it's just specifically for off-street parking requirements. The code requires two parking spaces per dwelling unit, and, which requires a total of 86 off-street parking spaces, and they're requesting to install 52.
And they had also then said that there were a certain number on the street.
Yes, yeah, I didn't include any of the on-street parking numbers. They, they can maybe elaborate on that. I just specifically stick to like what the code said, which is specific about off-street parking. So they may, there, there may be, you know, it is kind of clear, I think, that there's available on-street parking as well, but I didn't try to calculate that or estimate that. And then the other thing I wanted to add was that the PUD section of our code, it basically says that, to determine what, to base the deviation, dimensional standard requests, deviations from dimensional standards, you go off of the use in the most closely allowed, like, the closely associated zones. So, they're proposing multifamily, so we base their request for dimensional standards off of the RC standards, which is our highest density residential zone, so RC. So, in my report, you'll see a lot of references to RC, and it has to do with just the layout and the framework of the PUD code. So, again, the deviation specifically from the dimensional standards is for off-street parking. So they want to construct 52. And then, there's a whole separate section, they're not connected at all, but that the code also allows for a density bonus. It's not related to the, so it's a whole separate set of amenities they have to commit to in review to ask for a higher density. They have identified certain amenities that they're committed to, to moving forward with the project, and so they've requested a density of 34.40 dwelling units per acre, and the RC zone to compare it to is 14 dwelling units an acre. So the density bonus increased there, yeah. So, staff finds that the requested modifications and density bonus are reasonable and appropriate in light of the proposed amenities and conditions of approval that I've outlined in the report, and I'll go over in a minute. I believe the, these recommendations and requests align with the intent of the village code and the comprehensive plan, which emphasizes the preservation of land outside of the village boundaries, specifically for conservation areas and easements, commonly referred to as the village green belt, while encouraging redevelopment within our village limits. So, we actually have code in the intent, of the zoning code, that states that we should encourage infill, and this is an infill project, redevelopment inside our village boundary. And if we want to address the housing supply issue that we have, that's what we're going to need to do, because we have a lot of land around the village limits that is in conservation easements, and so it restricts our ability to grow and provide more housing opportunities. In addition, I believe that the proposed density bonus and code modifications are necessary to ensure the financial feasibility of the redevelopment, particularly given the significant costs associated with repurposing existing older structures, this one being 1950s. So I'm recommending approval with four conditions, one of them being a traffic impact study to be completed prior to final PUD, with implementation measures to be incorporated, if any. I will add that we did have a couple of our engineers look at it, and they didn't think that there are going to be substantial improvements needed, but we don't actually have like official study in our hands. So, at least 15% of the units to be designated as permanently affordable for households earning 80% or less of the AMI. Provide 43 onsite bicycle parking spaces per specifications in the village code. And prior to final development plan approval, obtain village approval of a storm water management plan in accordance with our standards. Stand for any questions?
I have a question, or I have a couple of questions. Cool roof technology, what is that?
I think I'll defer that to them to talk to them about.
There, we don't have anything that specifies what it is.
We'll have a definition of it in our code.
We don't have a definition of it. Okay.
Certain constructions-
I think, I think in the brochure, it talks about using white roofing membranes instead of the, the black membrane to, so that it reflects.
And that's all you'd have to do?
Yeah.
I don't know if it's, yeah, more expensive or not.
So, would, just a point of clarification, Windsor doesn't own this property.
No, Antioch owns it.
Antioch owns it.
And I, and I should say, we're only discussing that Kettering Building at this point.
Oh, I know that, yeah.
That's the only thing we're discussing.
But I'm just curious, at some point, I'm assuming, ownership will transfer to Windsor? But I guess at some point, they, at some point, they clarify.
Yeah, I think, yeah, if you just have specific questions for me about the staff report, those kind of things might be best for the applicant.
I got you.
So, I have a question, Meg. So, this is, one of the letters talked about how the, the PUD rules aren't for, you know, circumventing the zoning. And, so is there another way that they could have done this, other than by having a PUD?
The PUD is the only way to have a higher density, yes. The PUD is, yeah. Anything above 14 dwelling units per acre, you would need to go.
To have the higher density, you have to have PUDs. The, the parking issue, they could have done through whatever, a variance, but the density, they could not.
Yeah, technically, a parking exception, you could do, you have to reverse, or even come to the planning commission and ask a modification. There's two avenues for that, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for Meg at this point? Okay, then let's hear from Windsor.
First, I want to thank the planning commission for taking the time this evening, and I'd also like to thank Meg Leatherman, Johnny Burns, and the entire staff for their efforts since we began working with the village to express the clear, to address the clear housing need.
Tell us your name before-
Oh, pardon me.
Enter your name.
Eric Alfieri, I'm a partner at Windsor.
And you were sworn in.
I was sworn in.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Susan. I was just thanking the entire staff for their efforts in working with us since we began our conversation with the village to address the clear housing need in the area. And I'd also like to thank the village for their outpouring of support thus far for our proposed project. We've been inspired by many of the calls we've received encouraging us in our vision to provide high-quality, sustainably-built rental housing for members of the community. And finally, I'd like to thank members of the same commission for taking the time, several of you, to visit us in Dayton, where you saw a number of our properties. We hope that that experience demonstrated our commitment to extremely high-quality housing with a sense of place. And what, it's exactly what we intend to bring to the unique charm of your village here. We, we seek to preserve sense of place and to, to bring modernity while respecting the roots and cultures of the various areas in which we invest. And finally, we appreciate all of you taking the time out of your busy schedules to, to discuss this important topic tonight, and we're honored to be a potential partner to Yellow Springs in helping to responsibly address the housing need. So with that, we might have to jump around a little bit in the presentation, so you'll forgive me, but if we could turn to our slide deck, I think it might be helpful reference. So as Meg mentioned, we've had a number of conversations already. So some of you may already know Windsor from our prior meetings. However, for those of you who do not, if you could go two slides in, please. I wanted to take a couple of moments to introduce our firm. Since our founding in 1999 by Alex Dorsey, who's with us tonight, we have a deep history and connection to Ohio, having invested across the state, and take our stewardship of the communities in which we invest enormously seriously. If you go to the next slide, please, you'll see many of our key team members, all of whom are located in the state of Ohio. And we have several of the leadership from our company's development team here tonight, which I think should signal just how seriously we take our responsibility to the communities in which we invest. If you will skip two more slides ahead, I'll turn to the topic at hand. I'll speak a little bit more specifically to Kettering, and then we'll revisit the student union site. So actually, if you could turn to slide 16, the project overview of the Kettering Building, just a few more slides in. Thank you. As it pertains to the adaptive reuse of the Kettering Building, I think many of the similar themes that we've heard tonight will, will, will be in play. It's adaptive reuse and preservation, and we at Windsor have extensive experience in this regard, having completed several highly complex projects in Dayton, which many of the commission had the opportunity to see. They can be complex projects, but we have a ton of experience here, and in terms of the preservation of a unique building like Kettering Hall, we think we can bridge the gap between preservation, but provide high-quality, sustainable housing. And with that, we'd introduce a mix of studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom units, and as Meg pointed out, we will be preserving the existing elevator and wide hallways, which make it uniquely suitable to the 55-plus community. Additionally, from a sustainability perspective, we will be making this a cornerstone of our redevelopment of the building, replacing all plumbing, HVAC, and electrical systems with those with the highest degree of environmental sustainability practicable. So the next few slides are probably going to be a little bit too small for us to review in detail, but in terms of the unit mix, you'll see floor plan details here. I mentioned the wide hallways and the elevator use.
I'm sorry, but where is the elevator on that? I, I was trying to read the word.
Rear entrance, right there.
Yeah, okay.
Right in the center of the building.
Okay, in the, so that little square, that's the, that's the elevator. Okay, thank you.
So the unit mix will bring nine studios, 31-bedroom units, and four two-bedroom units across the three, the three floors, again, making it uniquely suitable for the intended use, primarily 55-plus housing. So we have a number of other slides in here. I'd ask maybe, Meg, there, some of these pertain to the vision of the entire project between both units. Does it make sense for me to speak to those now?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if we might, maybe we can go back to slide seven, please, because it'll be germane to, to, to both topics. Wanted to provide a brief overview. If you could go back one more slide, please. One more forward, yeah, there we go. Or actually, no, sorry, two more forward. Should be slide seven. Perfect, thank you. So, again, to provide a brief overview of why we're here, we think in terms of both of these projects- of these projects, first, the clear need for housing. Yellow Springs, despite its beauty, its charm, its vibrant community, has not seen significant new housing development in over 40 years and is a problem we seek to address. Second, as is consistent with all of our developments, and this is why we wanted to bring you to some of our properties nearby, preserving community charm is a core tenet of who we are as a developer and is a consistent part of our track record. Three, we seek to promote wellness and sustainability, sustainability in design, wellness in terms of the green space, bike paths, bike racks, et cetera, that we propose as part of our development to further integrate our properties in the community. And finally, four, provide a variety of housing options, specifically for young professionals' families, the senior community, as well as the preservation of 15% of all units designated as affordable, as Meg pointed out at the start of our discussion. We believe that our vertical integration and design ethos make us uniquely suitable for our proposed development. We'll deliver speed, quality, and impact, given we control nearly every facet of the development and construction process. And with our extensive experience in both adaptive reuse and new construction, we are ready to move with alacrity towards addressing the housing need in the community. So I think I'll pause there and perhaps address, do we want to do questions now? Do we want to move to the student union site? I defer to the committee.
Yeah, we've decided to have, we need kind of a clean record for both.
Okay.
So viewing this as separate.
So we're really just wanting to deal with the Kettering building right now?
Okay.
But I think, yeah, questions?
So how does the affordability maintain? How is that going to work? So the first person who moves in, you'll have some control over that, I guess? I mean, I have questions too about like, if you don't own the building, you know, so then is Antioch the landlord?
Sure. We will own the building prior to effectuating the repositioning. It's just a mechanical construct. So we will close on the property following if we are granted approval.
And do you guys, do you, like, do you manage buildings?
We do.
Okay. And then so how do you, how's the, what's the affordability?
Sure. Yeah, so there will be certain units, 15%, as we discussed, that will be set aside for individuals or families.
That's like a certain number of units? Is it all just the smaller units or how does that work?
Well, we, I mean, we haven't gotten into the details. Typically, it's sort of a ratio of all of the unit sizes. You know, we can go through all the math, but the actual mechanism is that unit set aside will only be rented to those making 80% or less of area median income.
Okay.
So that is the requirement, basically, for those units, for an application to be accepted by the management company, they will have to prove that they're making 80% or less of area median income.
And that only applies at the time when they're first renting the unit, when they sign a lease? They get a big promotion the next day.
That's a good question. I'd have to take that as a follow-up for you.
I have a related question that might help on that. You guys own and manage quite a number of properties. Do you have other properties that include affordable housing?
We have.
Okay, so you already have a system and a mechanism for dealing with that and monitoring it year-to-year or whatever? Okay.
Typically, and again, to respond to your question, typically, if someone graduates from that restriction, we're able to place them into a market rate unit. So that's functionally what happens. No, those, you know, it's not as if there's an auditing process month over month, but with a reapplication, you know, typically, we would move someone into a market rate unit.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
Other questions?
Well, so you talk about using the best available, energy-efficient.
Sure.
You know, so can you explain a little bit about like what your, what the roof is going to be and what this means and, you know, actual, like, what you're planning?
Sure.
So.
I can speak to some of that and then maybe Alex and Jason can jump in. But with respect to the roof, Susan, I believe you asked a question on that specifically. It really is, you know, an energy-efficient question. So basically, using materials, colors, and so on that reduce the impact of the sun beating on a roof that make, you know, AC units run longer or harder, if you will. So using sustainable design like that, for instance, we took you all through our building in Dayton called the Granton O Tower. We use a technology there, for instance, called vacuum insulated glass. What that is, not to bore you with the specifics, but it's a very energy-efficient glass that actually, we were credited as part of that repositioning of an early '70s office tower as one of the most energy-efficient office repositions, repositioning, excuse me, in North America at the time. So basically, that glass really limited the amount of sunlight coming in, heating up the building, you know, entire glass facade, and prevented seepage of, you know, air-cooled air on the inside out of the building. So, you know, it's really, it'll depend once we get into sort of the specifics of how we preserve the Kettering building, but it's using technologies around glass, insulation, energy-efficient HVAC units, the roofing technology, et cetera, that sort of reduce waste.
I can speak to it. You guys are lovely.
Yeah, up here. Do you want to come up? Tell us your name and tell us if you were sworn in, please.
My name is Alexius Dorsey. Yes, I was sworn in.
Thank you.
So to answer your question.
Yeah.
The roof. The roof is going to be a 30-year fleece-back TPO. It'll be white.
Yeah.
There'll also be two layers, which unlike there is now, there'll be two layers of 2.2 insulation, which makes it like an R37 on your roof.
Okay.
Now, it's probably an R8. He was talking a little bit about the windows. So this new product, he talked about the vacuum insulated glass. The vacuum insulated glass, like, the glass here today, well, this is probably really bad, but those are probably better. They're probably in the R4, R2 to R4. This glass will be like R13. It'll be just like, you know, a residentially insulated exterior wall. Our HVAC units, the lowest possible unit we use, which is LEED certified, will also be a CER-18. It'll be placed on.
Separate ones for each unit?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. It'll be placed on the roof. So, you know, we'll, it's all a system. So, you know, it drains better, you know, there's a whole process instead of placing them down on the ground.
And are those heat pumps or mini splits?
Well, they're mini splits.
Mini splits, okay.
Yeah. So, so does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
And you had something else in there about LED lighting?
Yeah, we only use LED lighting. I mean, we've only used it for years. I think you folks went to a lot of our properties. It's been, that's been something for probably 10 years, Jason. I mean, we, and we've done several large public properties, Dublin Rec Center, you know, Green Roofs. I mean, we've done some really large projects that are LEED certified where that's a government-issued, it's a government-issued bond so that you get special financing. This will be a very like-kind product. You know, we haven't torn into the building yet. You know, it's always funny, by these old buildings, it's like, we call them alligators because they always eat. You know, you open up the walls, you're like, oh my gosh. So we plan on stripping the building, get rid of all the old wiring, everything, and we're going to go, it's going to go brand-new everything. You're going to have, you know, the best systems out there today. So it'll be, we own these properties, we manage them and run them for a long time. We don't, we're not, we're not guys that sell properties. So, you know, we plan on owning it, managing it. We want the operating cost to be as low as possible, not just for us, but also for the tenant.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, I think this would be the place for me to ask. I, you'll discover, I have a reoccurring theme tonight, having to do with parking. And I'm just, and each case is sort of unique. So here, you're asking for a reduction in parking spaces. And the off-street parking, I just computed, is about 1.2 car per unit, 1.21. But, yeah, I'm just concerned if that's enough. The code is two, I believe.
Yes.
We've often allowed a little bit less. And I'm just concerned, you know, we talk about pedestrian access, somebody's clinging and all that, but it's more aspirational in this village than in practice. But the thing I'm wondering, because my recollection is particularly with this property, the Kettering property, the Kettering Building property, you'd be capable of adding more spaces in the back. Am I remembering correctly?
If you need.
Okay. Because I just want to throw the idea out that a condition to add at some point would be to, you know, agree with this amount of reduced parking, but then some sort of parking evaluation once fully rented and all that to evaluate whether it's adequate or not, seeing that you would be capable of expanding. So I just want to throw that out as an idea that will, I think it's premature to add a condition at all right now. We're not at that stage. But it's something to chew on, let's say.
Well, you know, I wanted to mention that I know, I think you provided the list of apartments in Yellow Springs and their parking. And I'm real familiar with five of them. And Lawson Expansion, which was the second one by the Housing Authority, Lawson Place. And those basically have, Lawson Place, which was the oldest one, one Lawson Place, is only for seniors. So it was one-to-one. Lawson Expansion, they put in five additional parking spaces, so it's a little bit more than one-to-one. The Village Corey Street one, which is family housing, that's owned by the Housing Authority, they were required, they did two-to-one. So that was family housing. And then Cascades and Glen Cottage, which are home Inc. Cascades, they're doing one-to-one, that's senior housing. Glen Cottage, they did what, 1.125, I think, per unit? So that was reduced down. I'm not that familiar with the others. But so for senior housing, and this is senior housing, there is, it can be reduced.
So, Susan, I averaged all those things together. I totaled them all up, and it's 1.3 spots per unit. So we're, they're asking for 1.2.
So that's pretty close.
So we're really, we're really very, very close to what that averaged.
Sure, sure. And then the fact that I think, I think in your report, you did say you have 15 spaces in front.
Correct.
And maybe the side, which would be very available for the people there. Although I have to say, with the Wellness Center, a lot of people are using the Wellness Center, park there too, and park on the other side of the street, although it does have a parking lot people could be using. Any other questions at this point? If you don't have anything else you want to say, then we're going to open it up for our public hearing then. Thank you so much. You know, and I did want to say, you mentioned it, Gary and I and Meg did visit your places in Dayton, and they were beautiful. You do wonderful work. It was outstanding. And I think that you would do wonderful work at this, at the Kettering building too. I mean, we were very impressed with how good it looked.
Thank you.
Jason's very proud of the lighting.
Yeah, by the way, I'd like to thank Meg for sending me all those pictures. I was going to go, but I ended up having to work that day, but she sent me a ton of pictures.
We'd be happy to have you another time, Scott.
Look, I have a plan on trying it.
Okay, we are going to then open it up to the public hearing just to talk about the Kettering building. So anybody who wants to come up and speak, you're going to have two minutes. Please tell us your name, your address, and just confirm that you were sworn in. And if you weren't sworn in, that's okay, you can still talk, and I will swear you in very quickly. So anybody who wants to come forward, please do.
Hello, my name is John Herbold. I was sworn in, and I have concerns, a couple of concerns about the change of the building. I live on Marshall Street, you know, which is a real nice, quiet neighborhood right now. We've noticed increased traffic with the construction up behind the firehouse already. Let me show you. I'm going to point to where my house is located. Right here. And that's my garage and this lot, and that was the old building. Okay, so I back up to the parking lot. 125 feet of my property are up against the alley behind that building. One concern, I want to make sure that that alleyway does not ever get closed because that's how I access my garage. There's an alley next to the brick building. You can go there and turn left and get to my garage that way. Number two, concerned about senses, lighting and hearing. I know when you put HVAC units behind houses, they hum, they buzz, they constantly go. They got one up at the Varney Office Building there, and it's quite loud. There's a generator behind the Kettering Building that, when it runs, is very loud, as is the other one up on Livermore. And the other concern I have is lighting. You're going to have 45 units, which could be 45 cars or it could be 53, somebody said, or 80, 82. Right now, when people pull into that parking lot, the headlights shine right in my bedroom window. So I would request, if they're going to take that down, to somehow eliminate the headlights from shining into my property. Maybe it's as simple as a fence, screen, something to screen it, or it's a hedge along their back property line that would block those headlights. Right now, YSO people come in 6:00 a.m., I see them every day, they come in for their, come into work, it shines right in my window, which is fine, but that's like three cars. Plus, the overhead lighting in the back of the parking lot is very bright. It's almost like full moonlight there right now. It shines on my property, which.
Okay, thank you. I think, did I hear the bell go off, Judy?
Was that buzzer for me?
Yep.
I apologize.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Next.
Tom Daggett, Art 215 East Whitman. I have been sworn in. Just a couple of quick things. They keep talking about this is the first significant development in 40 years. We have Spring Meadows, 90 units. We have the Cascades that are construction. We have Glen Cottage, and we have the Lytec being proposed. So it's not the only game in town. There is other things going on here. They're proposing 43 units, as we know. That's more than double than what would be allowed per zoning code. One of you asked Meg, could they do this any other way besides doing a PUD? And she said, no. One of the things in the code says PUDs will not be used as a way to circumvent conventional code, or conventional zoning. So that's been asked and answered, yes, they're using PUDs to circumvent code. A couple of things, in Meg's packet, I, the parking numbers don't, I don't find, think they compute. I don't know all of them. I counted Hawthorne Place today, the packet says 80. I counted 104. Twin Coach packet says 24. I counted 35. Lawson Place, the one owned by the village, packet says 16. There are 31 striped parking spaces there. So you doing the percentage of 1 to 0.31 is not accurate because I don't think her numbers are accurate. I'm sorry, Meg, but I think the numbers.
That's the only thing you found? Is there more? Is that it?
No, well, I only have two minutes.
Okay.
So, you know, I think we should try to keep to the one per two onsite by us allowing off-street parking into the, into the mix, or street parking into the mix. off-street parking into the, into the mix, or, or street parking into the mix. It's basically saying, okay, you've overdeveloped your site, let us reward you by giving you street parking. So they put in more than they should, we reward them for that. So basically, that's my point.
Thank you.
I, well, I should just say, I, I think this would be a wonderful building. I think this would be a wonderful residential building. I just wish it were closer to the norms of what is, the zoning is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I mean, I know we're not supposed to do this, but is it okay? No?
I mean, I think that...
I was just going to say about the inaccuracy in our...
Well, I, I think that if somebody wants to spend time counting parking spaces to counter what you've already done, that's, that's on them.
And Hawthorne got extra parking because of the fire.
And Hawthorne did get extra parking because of the fire. Thank you for every, for the work that you've done. I think that we're...
We need to move on with the public hearing. Next person who would like to speak? Come forward. Sam?
Hi, I'm Samantha Williams-Eckenrode. I'm speaking as a private citizen. I'm speaking on behalf of housing in general, because my parents came to the village in 1957, when my dad was a new Antioch College professor of chemistry, and my mom was a new, well, Antioch College at that time was about 100 years old and thriving, and Mills Lawn had just been built, and my mom was the new kindergarten teacher. And the only problem they found with the village was that it was widely known that there was a housing shortage, not just of affordable housing, but at every level of any, any kind of housing. So they landed in a little tiny duplex on West North College Street and looked for two years. And finally, after not being able to find a place to rent, a bigger place to rent or a place to buy, they ended up building in what was then the big, hot, controversial new development, Fair Acres. And many of the things were said about Fair Acres that are said today about any new development that is mentioned. They, well, I won't go into that, but they built at 310, or 210 Gardendale Drive, and that's where I was adopted to in 1962. We left and came back. Each time we came back, it was a big struggle to find housing. They ended up having to build another house in town in order to find a spot. So we do have a shortage of housing in all categories to this day. Rentals are even harder than places to buy, to find. I can assure you that we have plenty of people in town now who work here and would like to live here and don't have spots for them. I know I have to finish, so I'll say that when I was a child, East North College went through from, it went through from Livermore to Corey Street. I remember driving on it many times. I respectfully would ask the president of Antioch College and her board to consider, along with the village, the potential for reopening that, because it wasn't a crazy, busy street, it was just a useful street. I think that might help. And then, as a Realtor, I just want to say, I, I am representing the college in the sale of the Kettering Building and the Suntech Fells Building, if possible. And I wanted to mention the concepts of highest and best use, and also the concept of one right buyer. So since I'm, since Windsor has their own real estate company, their own team, I'm not representing them. I'm only representing the college in this transaction. I feel we have found a miraculous one right buyer, and I would like people to be aware of that. So that's it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sue.
Okay, if anyone else that would like to speak, please come forward.
I'm not sworn in.
Okay, but I will swear you in.
Thank you.
Really quickly.
Pat DeWes, and I live on Livermore Street.
Okay, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in matters before this board?
Absolutely.
Great, then you're sworn in.
Okay. My concern is street traffic. I live on Livermore. Can you give me... My name, Pat DeWes, sorry. Pat DeWes, I live on Livermore Street. And Livermore Street is a very active, almost a pedestrian mall. I mean, because it is parallel to 68, and people don't want to walk along 68, they walk, they ride their bicycles. Be great that they're having all these bike racks, but that means even more people are going to ride their bicycles on Livermore. We do have a safe schools transportation program, which encourages the schools to have, encourage students to ride their bikes and hike to school. They're very good at it. And Livermore Street is full of children on bicycles, and women pushing baby carriages, and people riding their bicycles to work. I know some people right here ride their bicycles to work. So I just wonder who, I'm not sure who, is looking at the transportation issues, the safe schools transportation issues. Is that the job of this body? I wouldn't think it's the Realtors who have to take that on, but we need to understand that in relation to the parking issues, in relation to the number of automobiles. I mean, you take that number of apartments and put in a car, or a car and a half, however you do that, and see the traffic problems. So it's a safety issue. It's a big safety issue. So I would like to see some attention to that. I don't want that to be ignored. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, who else would like to speak? Okay, nobody else? Going once, going twice? I'm going to close the public hearing for this. And so what other discussion do we want to have? So I know that Gary brought up making a condition that, at a certain point, that we look at parking to see, is there enough parking? And if there's not enough parking, then to ask Windsor to build additional parking on their land.
Yeah, but that, I wanted to throw the idea out. That would come at a different stage. I, to be honest, I get a little confused on the stages of the process here, you know, because, but I know, because I know there's several more.
Oh, yeah, but tonight you still will have a recommendation.
Yes.
With conditions, and it goes to council.
Yep. The first, we, we need to decide, are we, do we agree with all of the, I guess, should I be going through all of your findings? Does anyone have any questions about the findings Meg has about in the report?
I got a question for Eric, if I get him back up here.
Okay.
The gentleman brought up his house. Now, I'm pretty sure y'all have no intentions of closing down the alley.
We do not.
And would, would putting up like a privacy fence between the two be feasible?
Absolutely.
All right. That's all I want to know.
I prefer a hedge, if that's possible.
They might do that. Don't worry. Strawberry, a shrubbery.
No boxwood. No taxes.
Okay.
Thank you.
With the planning commission, are you okay with the density? Are people okay with the density? Okay, and how do you, we were just talking about the parking spaces. So they are proposing 43 units and 52 parking spaces, I believe, is what they said.
Yeah.
Are you okay with that? Do you want to make a condition that at a certain point, that it is, we look at it and reevaluate if they need additional parking? And when is that point?
Yeah, I'm not sure how you would word that, but yeah, I'd like to see, something like that, if it's reasonable to add as a condition.
I am struggling in the moment to figure out exactly how that would work.
Yeah.
Once the zoning is in place and the preliminary plan is approved, some type of triggering mechanism to revisit it isn't really accounted for in the code.
We'd almost have to put a date in or something.
One, I don't know.
Well, the thought I had would be, once the projects, well, construction's completed and you're fully rented, then you, you hit a mature point in terms of the amount of parking, and then you have some sort of parking survey?
I think just the...
Judy doesn't like that idea.
The administrative, like, practical aspect of that, what could we do, you know, if they, you know, what could we actually do in that point?
Yeah. Well, maybe it's not practi, I wanted to throw it out for the sake of discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially considering, it's, it's, it's a consideration that you could manage, just because of the, my understanding is that you'd have space to expand if necessary, but if it, if it just seems too problematic to figuring out how to do that, well...
I'd like to interject really quickly. So in 1992, which is like the last time, in 1990, Antioch had a significant student population, there's 600 students, and more than half of those students had cars. That's 300 extra cars. And so, I mean, we dealt with it then with more village population. So we had more people in the village at that point, and more Antioch students, and parking was an issue. The other thing that I would argue is that people who live in apartments typically don't have two cars. Typically, we have one car, and sometimes no cars.
That's interesting.
And the reason why this is ideal is because it's so close to shopping. It's so close to, to the village amenities. It's so close to the elementary school. It's so close, everything is within walking distance.
Senior Center, the new senior center is right there.
Right, and so we're going to encourage walkability or rollability in this community.
Should be less parking.
Right, I mean, yeah, it's great that we have the parking that we have, and also, we have to consider the economic constraints there on people who are renting. You know, people often don't have more than one car who are renting, who are renting apartments.
And to touch on what Carmen said about that area, not only with the students, but yes, the Kettering Building, or not Kettering, but the Suntech Building, which there was tons of small businesses in that place, and then you had all the employees that were at the Kettering Building. This is not new to this part of town to have high traffic volume.
Okay, so it is sounding like from the conversation that you're comfortable at this point of approving the 52 parking spaces.
Yes. Karen made good points relative to some of my concerns, and, yeah.
All right. Okay.
I'm done.
The first thing that we have to do is we have to rezone, we have to make a recommendation to council to rezone it to a PUD. So would somebody like to move a recommendation to council to rezone this property as a PUD?
I'll make a motion to rezone the property to a PUD.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Judy?
Green.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Osterholm.
Yes.
Zaremski.
Yes.
Stiles.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to look at, because it sounds like this process that we're ready to approve it? There are four conditions that Meg has. If you will all look at it, it's on page 16. The conditions of approval are, a traffic impact study shall be completed prior to the final PUD approval for the general vicinity with implementation of any recommended mitigation measures incorporated into the final development plan. Two, at least 15% of the units shall be designated as permanently affordable for housing, households earning 80% or less of the area median income. Three, provide 43 onsite bicycle parking spaces per specifications in the village, in Village Council 1264.02. And four, prior to the final development plan approval, obtain village approval of a storm water management plan in accordance with the requirement of the Village Council. Are all those acceptable to votes? Would somebody like to make a motion?
I so move.
I will second.
Did the commission want to also condition the buffering, the hedge?
Fence.
A shrubbery?
Shrubbery hedge, fence.
Sure.
The fence hedge?
Why not? It's not going to help you in the winter.
That would be our fifth condition. A buffering fence or hedge or mechanism.
Some kind of screening.
Natural screening.
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 Okay.
Screening.
Screening mechanism.
All right. And where? The both sides of the alley, one side of the alley?
So it would be...
On the, on the east?
South.
It's on their side.
I know it's south, but east side or west side?
South side.
Yeah.
On the south side. So that's our fifth condition of approval. So I guess we should go back and, do we need to have another motion then that includes our fifth one?
We could just add it.
We can just add it, okay. So that's added. So Judy, I think we're ready to vote.
All right. Brown.
Yes.
Osterholm.
Yes.
Zaremski.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Stiles.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we are ready for our third public hearing, which is the preliminary development plan for planned unit development of 128 units. And I can't find my second page.
On 275 East North.
Yes. So Meg.
Okay, yes. This is the exact same application, submitted, the same applicant, Windsor Development LLC. They actually own this property, though.
Oh.
So they're the owner, and it is address 275 East North College Street. It's, is it East Center? Oh, I thought you were correcting me. Okay. It's like I've been wrong all along. Okay, it's in the E1 or Educational Institution Zone, and the planning commission, again, is the recommending body, and then it moves on to council. And this is, I guess, the, speaking of the steps, the preliminary development plan for the PUD, and then if it gets approved by council, they come back with the final development plan, has a more detailed site plan. This is more of like the conceptual level, just looking at the density and any deviations from the standards that they need. To summarize generally, the intent of those steps. Adjoining property owners were mailed a notice on April 21st, 2025. Signs were posted on the property on May 2nd, 2025, as well as a notice being published in the paper on May 2nd. A staff report was prepared that outlines applicable village code, which was provided to the planning commission and posted on our website on May 9th. The applicant proposes to demolish the old Student Union Building, which is in significant disrepair. I put some pictures in there. I mean, it's, it has a lot of issues, mold, I didn't go into detail, so I haven't specifically gone in myself, but there's a lot of issues with the property. It's considered blighted. They want to demolish it and construct two structures for multifamily housing for a total of 128 apartments with no age restriction. So to summarize, the PUD section of our code allows for deviations from certain dimensional standards, as long as the applicant commits to having certain amenities. Those are outlined in my report. A modification, there are several modifications on this one versus the one of last time. So there's three modifications from dimensional standards for, on, on this application. One for off-street parking, one for height, and one for rear yard setback. So the off-street parking standard is, again, you know, two per dwelling unit. The applicant would like to have 110 versus the 256 required for meeting the code outright. And the height modification to allow 49 feet, eight and a half inches, and a rear yard setback of 11 feet versus the 15 feet rear yard setback. In addition to the dimensional standards requested, modifications to dimensional standards, the code allows for a density bonus. I just lost my spot, sorry. So if, if, if they provide certain amenities, they can, that are a different set of amenities, they're allowed, are authorized to request a higher density. And this instance, the density is 59 dwelling units an acre, 59.01 dwelling units an acre, compared to, again, the multifamily zoning being RC, so the 14 dwelling units an acre for RC.
So you said they're asking for 59 per unit, per acre?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And that is... And that is, and just for me to clarify, that's not a given, even if they have the three things in the density. That is really for planning commission to determine if we want to approve that type of density.
Right. Yeah. I guess the code states that the planning commission may authorize an increase in density, not a shall. That's the difference. If it said shall, then you would have to if they satisfied the three amenities.
So it's may.
May. And then regarding open space, the applicant has provided a calculation showing 29.81% of a lot will remain as open space. There's an exhibit in the packet that kind of shows how they calculated that.
Did that include?
The what?
The roof.
No, there's no green roof.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. No, there's just open space. They, yeah. And then I have, should the plan, should the planning commission vote to recommend approval of this? I have several conditions of approval that are all very similar to the last application. First, a traffic impact study shall be completed prior to final PUD approval with implementation measures, if any, incorporated in the final development plan. At least 15% of the units shall be designated as permanently affordable for households earning 80% or less than the area median income. A five-foot sidewalk shall be constructed along the property's frontage. They have frontage on both Livermore and President Street. And then this provide 128 onsite bicycle parking spaces per specifications in Village Council, Village Code 1264.02. And then prior to final development plan approval, obtain village approval of a stormwater management plan in accordance with our code. That is all I have.
Okay. Just questions for Meg. Okay. I guess maybe who's going to present?
If we could just start on slide 10. I won't be jumping around. Just go around. I'll try to keep it brief because we spoke to a handful of thematic points about our focus as an organization. So I'll just keep my commentary specific to the student union site. And I think there are a handful of items to highlight on this page. This is a new build, obviously, so we have control over the design aesthetic. We're borrowing here, as you'll see in the ensuing pages, mid-century motifs found throughout Antioch's college, excuse me, Antioch College's campus. And the property was purpose designed to bring those elements to further integrate this building into that campus feel. And gentlemen like Jason on our team have enormous experience in this regard. And we approach, as I've mentioned throughout our discussion tonight, each one of our new builds with that thoughtful orientation to integrating with the community. You won't see us as the type of developer that punches out the same type of development town after town after town after town. We take that responsibility seriously. Second, sustainable design. This is an easy one because we get to build it from the ground up. So once again, as Alex pointed to, we will be employing the most sustainable design available to us today. This property will fix, will include a mix of one and two bedrooms. And then green space preservation and wellness, again, similar to the theme from our discussion on Kettering, is a core component of our proposal here. Taking a blighted and unsafe property and preserving green space for the benefit of residents and the community alike. If you go to the next slide, you'll have a little bit more detail here on the site plan, which, as Meg pointed out, features 128 units, 128 parking spots, including those that are proposed on the street, those diagonal.
So it is 128 parking spaces, not 110?
There's 110 on the, on the parking lot. And then we propose on this site plan here, diagonal spaces that bring us to a total of 128.
Okay, great. Thank you.
No problem.
That are on President Street?
Correct.
So are those counted as onsite or are those on-street parking?
I mean, we will be constructing them, I think. You know, Meg, I'm not sure how the code would read.
Yeah, I technically just calculated the ones that are on the property they own.
Okay.
The diagonal ones on President Street, are they on their property or on the village right-of-way?
I believe they're in the village right-of-way.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And then the unit makes 96 one-bedroom units and 32 two-bedroom units. Again, catering towards young families and young professionals. As we mentioned, the, the Kettering repositioning is more suitable to the age restriction that we discussed. If you turn to the next slide, the next handful of slides, these are concept renderings of what we would propose. Again, borrowing from many of the motifs found on, or being inspired by many of those mid-century motifs found on Antioch's campus.
Could I ask a dumb question? So in all of these things, you show this like big green space that's actually where there's existing houses. I think it's very misleading.
It is. Well, even where?
Well, I, can you?
If you go to the next slide, or the?
The previous.
Or, yeah, so if you go back one more slide, you see you got, you got a big green space there with a couple bushes on it, but that isn't actually what that's like at all. That's where those two houses are.
Well, that's just an illustrative site plan. If you go to the, it may be clearer on the next slide. I mean, we're basically just spotlighting the specific.
Please do not comment.
And I think I heard a question about green space. There is the park in between the two units, both to the south and then to the north, which will be preserved community space.
Okay.
So that's, again, I won't dwell on some of the more general narrative. I think where I'd want to close, and then I suppose we can open it up to questioning is, or to questions, is, you know, I think the PUD process is expressly intended to be for this purpose. Communities are living and breathing things, and a zoning code doesn't allow for the flexibility to address needs as they evolve. And I think what we've heard, some of which we've heard tonight, much of which we've heard from the community over the past year, is that there's a real need for housing. And so that's what we're here to discuss tonight. And, you know, I'd like to reference a section from the zoning code as it pertains to the PUD process, specifically regarding the PUD being consistent with the village's comprehensive plan and vision. And when we began this dialogue about a year ago, our first step was to engage with this special community. And as we learned about the comprehensive plan and vision, we sought to follow its principles in how we approached our Yellow Springs renewal project. The language in the code reads, "The PUD will be consistent with the village's comprehensive plan and vision." Yellow Springs and Miami Township, specifically, the following planning principles shall be adhered to as applicable. One, redevelopment and infill locations should be favored over greenfield development. Two, natural features and resources should be preserved or at least conserved. Three, future development, redevelopment shall strengthen the physical character of the village. Four, quality design is emphasized for all uses to create an attractive, distinctive, public and private realm. Five, places are created with an integrated mix of uses that contribute to the village's identity and vitality. Six, diverse housing choices are found throughout the village, including relatively high-density and affordable units. Seven, parks, open space, and recreational areas are incorporated into future development. And finally, eight, places are connected and accessible throughout the community by transportation methods other than automobiles. It's our view that we've remained anchored to nearly all of these tenets of the village's comprehensive plan to the maximum extent possible while presenting a plan that we know that we can finance and execute. We're thrilled to have the opportunity to serve the community and are happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Questions for Eric.
Have you guys built a building, a four-story walk-up before? Do you have experience with that?
Yes.
And it worked out okay? People didn't mind walking up all those?
This is actually a three-story with a subgrade.
Okay.
It's not a four-story solid, it's three-story solid, but there's a subgrade.
Okay. So like at ground level, to get up to the, so it's down a half a flight and up, so three and a half flights up?
That's correct.
Okay. Have you done that before? And you had, and you had no trouble with people going?
Yeah.
Yeah. If you're going to speak, we need you to come up so we can hear you, so people at home can hear you.
All the millions, all the millions watching.
Yeah.
Yes, we have.
A couple hundred are watching.
So what was it like, I mean, what's it like, I mean, what did people say about like going up three and a half flights of steps?
How about carrying furniture up?
Yeah, they were, they were fine. Everybody was good.
Okay.
So I guess I have a question because I consider this a four-story. I know some of it is underground, but it's taller than a three-story.
That's correct.
Because one of your things, aren't you asking for variance on height?
Yeah, it would be about four and a half feet.
Four and a half feet. Question I had, I guess, because, and there may be somebody here that can address it later on, is, is an elevator required?
No, not by code.
Okay. Because I looked up the ADA law and I thought that if it was higher than three stories, then an elevator is required.
No. This will be, I can't reference the exact code, but obviously, we wouldn't be proposing if we didn't build it before and had approved it.
So it's not accessible, then, to persons with disabilities that can't go upstairs?
That's correct.
The, I think the, well, the design of it, too, it isn't like there's a hallway connecting them all. There, there's separate entrances, so you couldn't have an elevator, like for the whole thing, like with the Kettering Building.
There's a common hallway.
Okay.
Yeah.
Really quickly, with all due respect, neither are more than half of the rental units available in the Village of Yellow Springs accessible either. And from the perspective of someone who's been housing insecure, a lot of, a lot of people are in this community, but nobody seems to think about that, climbing up three flights of steps, if I'm able, to get into a safe, energy-efficient apartment with non-leaking windows and a non-leaky roof and no mold issues, you find, you find, you find a way to, to make it a thing. And so I'm not saying that that's not a thing. And of course, we care about ADA compliance, but if we're going to start talking about ADA compliance, we need to start talking about ADA compliance.
Yeah.
And I don't want to just like, you know, poke, poke at you guys about it.
Yeah. Well, I, I will tell you, we've, I mean, it's literally thousands of units that we've done. And so these three stories walk-ups are literally everywhere. And the four-story, you're calling it a four-story, we call it a three-story. They're everywhere as well. So it was, it was an instrument to try to celebrate the need for more units. And we, you know, we love to build, I think you would love to build as well.
Do we, do we have an ADA requirement in our code?
You do.
Okay.
You mean, you mean in Ohio, the higher revised?
No, 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 no. The village, the village zoning code.
So the ADA is applicable to areas of public accommodation. These are going to be, these are going to be private apartments.
This is private, yeah, yeah. So specifically for this particular development, there is, there is not really an applicable ADA requirement.
Correct.
But in terms of whether there's something specifically in the codified ordinances on point, that I don't know. I'd have to check that.
Yeah. In the higher revised code, there is an ADA compliant ratio, so that if you're, let's say you live there, your wife is of need, we still have to make a certain number of the units ADA compliant on the interior, which we intend to do.
Yeah.
But obviously, there, there's stairs.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Have a great day.
Any other questions?
Yeah. I have one. It's related to my ongoing theme. But, but, but actually, back some time ago, I know there was, there had been some discussion about, this has something to do with, with traffic and parking and all that stuff. There had been some discussion about trying to open up East North College from Livermore to Cory Street and to reestablish that thoroughfare, which was mentioned earlier, not just, you know, for car, to help route the car traffic directly to Cory Street and also.
East North College.
Yeah.
I thought we were talking about the bicycle.
That Johnny, Village Manager Johnny Burns is prepared to address that.
Okay.
Okay. Have we sworn him in?
Okay.
No, we're about to swear in.
I did in February. I did not sign up and I did not swear in. Yes.
Okay. Yes, okay.
Okay. So I want to make sure that we're all perfectly clear. I have started conversations with Antioch to get the right-of-way back. Those are ongoing. I don't think putting the conditions of a public right-of-way on the developer
Yeah.
is even a thing that we can do.
Okay.
It should be based on their application and not what we're planning on doing in the future.
Okay. So if something would happen, it would sort of be a bonus?
Absolutely. And I am striving for that bonus.
Yeah.
I've been working with Jane and, and others to make that happen.
Right.
I think it's a great thing for the village, even if things go awry.
Yeah. And also, part of that discussion, I believe, is not just for the roadway to go back through or the, but also multimodal.
Multi-motor path and then angle parking on the south side of that roadway.
Right, okay.
From Livermore to Cory, it's going to help out the village. It will also be a cut-through street instead of going all the way down Allen and then coming all the way back up to town. It'll also get the middle section closer to the glen's.
Okay. Well, good luck with it. Keep it, keep it as your number one priority.
Thank you.
I've got about 50.
Okay.
Okay. I think if there's not more questions, it's time to open it up for the public hearing. So to remind everybody, you get two minutes. Please come forward, state your name, your address, and just affirm that you were sworn in. So go ahead, whoever wants to come, just go.
Hi, my name is Riley Dixon. I live at 320 Union Street. I'm a reporter for the Yellow Springs News. I just have a simple question.
Yeah, you can speak louder.
Sorry. I'm interested in how the student union is going to be torn down safely. And I'd be interested to hear Windsor speak to that or planning commissioners ask about that following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the public hearing.
Hi, John Herbold again. I was sworn in. I just have a question for the builder. I wonder what the difference in infrastructure, when you build a completely new building, regarding heating and cooling, what system is? I know we mentioned on, on the other Kettering Building, I think they said they were going to use mini-splits to heat and cool. And I'm just curious, is that same type of heating, cooling used on the new construction? Again, my concern is with noise pollution.
Okay, thank you.
I have been sworn in. My name is Desiree Nickel. I live at 131 East Ava Street on the Triangle, approximately two to three doors down from the proposed Student Union Apartment Complex, Proposed Student Union Apartment Complex. I have lived there for 35 years. I appreciate the detailed overview of the Student Union Project provided by Windsor Development. Within the overview, I noted two values that you articulated, and it is these two values that I want to address this evening. The first value reads, "The team has a passion for thoughtfully working with communities to address their needs." The second reads, quote, "Our developments focus on creating quality housing and amenities that seamlessly integrate with their surroundings," unquote. In my view, this project, as currently proposed, meets neither of the two expressed values. First, the project does not meet the needs of the community. First, the project does not meet the needs of the community. Yes, Yellow Springs is in need of additional housing, but not just any housing, we need affordable housing. By affordable housing, I mean apartment units that rent for anything from $550 per month to approximately $850 per month. For example, my son recently rented a studio apartment on Winter Street for $550 a month, and he lived there for five years. And my father rented a unit in Twin Coach Apartments for $650 per month, he lived there 13 years. My understanding is that you recently added a goal to set aside 15% of the apartments for low-income renters. Exactly what does this mean? How much will these apartments rent for? For how long will you keep them affordable? Second, and this is most important to me, the project as proposed does not seamlessly integrate with its surroundings. The largest apartment complexes in Yellow Springs are Twin Coach Apartments with 48 units total, and Hawthorne Apartments with 46 units, 50 if you count the four units that recently burned down. The proposal for the Student Union site, a little bit left, is for 128 apartments with 128 parking spots. A development this big is suitable for a big city like Dayton or Columbus, not a small rural village with a population of 3,700 like Yellow Springs. The impact of such a large development on my neighborhood would be devastating. Parking is insufficient, so people will be parking up and down nearby streets, making it difficult for residents to park in front of their own houses. Traffic will increase dramatically at all hours of the day and night, the peace I have enjoyed for 35 years will be shattered. Don't get me wrong, I am 100% supportive of an apartment complex on the Student Union site, I just wanna see it on the scale of other apartment complexes in Yellow Springs, that is, in the 48 to 50-unit range. That we can accommodate, anything more is a profit grab, and certainly does not conform to the values articulated in the proposal.
Thank you.
I'm Kim Colasa, I'm at 604 Livermore Street. These apartments are plans that they've used before, they're intended for urban environments, I agree with what Desiree said. They, as I said, it's a subfloor apartment, so you go down a flight of stairs, up a flight of stairs, up two flights of stairs, up three flights of stairs. They say this works, I'm not sure young families or seniors are gonna find that this is a solution. Without ADA compliance, they're not eligible for any kind of federal grant monies. The, the village does not come close to compliance with their zoning codes. They, they say that they are, they're caring for the environment, but, you know, we have Glen Helen, we have Agraria, we have the Glass Farm, we have the Tecumseh Land Trust. We're very passionate about a mix of environment and human population. Unity Village as proposed is not consistent with our values. Large multi-story buildings with a small park that really is only there because you can't put the buildings any closer together. They're gonna be taking out about 30 trees with at least 12 inches in diameter, and there will just be tiny little green spaces. They're, I guess, counting on the, the surrounding backyards of some of our neighbors and some of the land at the college. So I'm saying, please make sure that we vote to enforce, not to enforce, but to abide by current zoning, and make sure that whatever gets planned does comply with the code. I'm not, I would like to see affordable housing, I would like to see it be apartments, but let's please make it consistent what our zoning code is asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Yes, hello, I'm Don Sac, sworn in, 140 Marshall. I'm just gonna throw it out there, solar, a lot of big roofs up there. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Erin Rogers, I live at 113 East Whitman Street, about one block from the Windsor site. When I heard there was a proposal for apartments at East North College, I was pleased. As a working person earning an average middle-class wage, I understand not being able to spend 500 grand on a home. I've always hoped more affordable housing would be made available in this town. My excitement faded when I saw the submitted apartment complex because it looked familiar. It's reminiscent of buildings I've seen in Dayton, Columbus, and Cincinnati, all moderate to large cities. Yellow Springs is a small village and the density proposed by Windsor is excessive for this town and neighborhood. Having read Chapter 1254 on planning unit development, there are many guidelines this proposal does not satisfy, specifically size, adverse impact on the surrounding area, and lack of harmony with the surrounding area. I've been told the Windsor project is more dense than any recently proposed housing in the Dayton area. Yellow Springs zoning requirements for high-density multifamily residential allows 14 units per acre. If we went by this rule, 31 units would be allowed on the 2.2-acre site. Windsor is proposing 138, that's a fourfold increase. Other specific issues with this location include underestimation of parking, which is likely two spots for apartment, given the car dependency of this area, and general need to leave the village for work. We've talked about cars, and we've all talked about what we think is going on, but we need to engage experts on what's actually going on. Most of the people I know have to leave the village for, for work, and they have two vehicles, especially young professionals and families, which is who they said this is geared towards. Stormwater management has not been thoroughly addressed, nearly the entire site will be paved or built on. Vehicle traffic, including residents and deliveries, would be significant. Noise pollution from roof mounting mechanisms hasn't been addressed, nor is light pollution, et cetera. Space calm and quiet do matter. Windsor is a business, they wanna make money and do it quickly. This plan will impact the next 50 years of our neighborhood and village, and there is a middle ground. To acquiesce to a company's excessive plan because we want something, anything, is short-sighted and harmful. Because of the reasons people wanna live in this village and our existing PUD guidelines, the challenge to them, I urge the planning commission to start at the beginning. With the neighborhood and the land, ask what size project actually makes sense rather than how much can be crammed into an allotted space. I've got like two sentences left. Please do not allow Windsor to exceed PUD density guidelines by fourfold. Exponential unfettered growth cannot coexist with the environment. We must first ask what makes sense for the land, the environment, and humans. Also wanna note, I'm open to other opinions and corrections, anything I've said that's not accurate.
Thank you. Next.
As we've said, it's four times the density of what would be, what would be allowed. So this size unit of complex should be on nine acres of ground. This is on two acres. So four, you know, more than four times. They made a density bonus, or, so Meg says they made a density bonus, I question that. Does that mean it's unlimited? What's, what's, what's flexible and what's absurd? This is absurd. It says that, you know, it should complement the neighborhood. This is an offense to the neighborhood, it does not complement the neighborhood. 110 parking spaces for 128 units? No. And they have no bulk trash locations in that parking lot. So put some dumpsters in, that's gonna take out spaces. Put in the bulk mail slots, that's gonna take out a parking space or two. They show on-street parking along President diagonally. There's also diagonal on the other side of the street, so basically you're creating a double-sided diagonal parking on a one-way street, making it a one-way street with no outlet. So if somebody's parking on that very end, which they will, because there's not enough parking, they're backing out 300 feet, backing out 300 feet till, till they get to President Street. And you tell me there's not gonna be accidents happening on there? I think, if, do we need housing? Yes, we need housing. But for this site, I think the only solution would be, once East North College is extended from Livermore to Corey, have all ingress and egress from that. That way, it's not gonna disrupt the neighborhood. The acute angle of the triangle, it's not a safe intersection as it is. You put 200 extra cars a day circling, because they're looking for parking, because there's not enough parking in this, it's gonna be an accident waiting to happen there, too. They say it's a thoughtful new build, the thoughtfulness is in how much money they could make off this property. So, yeah, this is not something you see, this is a project you see along the interstate with a billboard that says, "If you lived here, you'd be home by now." This is not a Yellow Springs property. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I'm Jerry Papania, I've been sworn in, and I live at 214 East Whitman Street, and I share 365 feet of property line with this proposed project. I live in that green space that was, that was shown there, my neighbor and I, Joyce. I'm in favor of additional housing in the village, providing that's appropriately sited, designed, and maintains the character of the community. The proposed project meets none of these criteria, and approval of PUD zoning, allowing this project to move forward, would be an egregious application of the zoning code, and would set a regrettable precedent for future zoning change requests. I wanna point out that the public notification for this requested change of zoning was obscure in that the site location noted in the Yellow Springs News was listed as an address on a portion of a street that was vacated decades ago and doesn't exist. The location of the rezoning should have been clearly identified as a former Antioch Student Union property with frontage on Livermore, Whitman, and President Streets. The single sign posted on Livermore Street ignored the notification on the President and Whitman Streetsides, the property that make up 75% of the site's frontage on public streets. This includes the property access, the property across from Rockford Chapel on President Street. Rockford Chapel is used by the Quaker and Jewish communities that will be adversely affected by competition for parking during weekly services and other events if this project as proposed is approved. The public right-of-way for President Street has been incorrectly noted on a previously submitted survey as 80 feet. A recent survey indicates that the actual right-of-way is 66 feet. This will eliminate the 18 diagonal parking spots shown on President Street, resulting in less than 100 spaces when you take out what's required for trash collection and, and other things. I wanna note that there's currently a proposal for low-income housing on, out on East Dean Road, and that's proposed by a respected developer who works in 20 or more states. And that, that proposal includes 1.75 parking spaces per residence. And that's low income. In a market-rate housing, there's gonna be more cars than that. The net effect is gonna be the neighborhood is gonna look like street fair.
Twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. Okay, thank you.
So the parking's a major issue. I also wanna point out that I submitted a three-page.
Yes.
Document pointing out other things that need to be considered, and I think those need to be taken seriously.
Thank you, we did get this. Next to speak?
Well, I have been sworn in. My name is Ellis Jacobs, I live at 131 East Davis Street, nice to see all of you. I support housing in that area, I support rental housing in that area, I supported having right there. They're just trying to, you know the old expression, trying to get 10 pounds of potatoes in a five-pound sack? Well, they're actually trying to get 20 pounds of potatoes into that five-pound sack. It's just too much, what they're trying to do there, and it is true, this is, I've driven around the area trying to look for similar complexes, you see them on the side of the highway, you see them down by O'Costco, and on your way to the Dayton Mall. There they are. And I think the company sort of knows that, because the equivalent that they tried to give us, I looked at their equivalents, the one that they give us is in downtown Dayton, the flats on Webster. I know that, it's right next to the Little Fish Brewery. And I'm not saying I hang out at the Little Fish Brewery, but I've been there once or twice, and I've watched them build it. It's 111 units in the middle of an intense industrial, commercial area. There is a large warehouse on one side, there's a, there's a large warehouse on the other side, it's surrounded by commercial stuff, the ballpark is right there. It's meant, these sort of large buildings are meant for that sort of environment. That's great. They really do not fit the village. And so all the talk about, we wanna, you know, we're trying to be part, a good part of the community, it's, they're just not fulfilling that with something this large. Very quickly, I can maybe be helpful on the ADA question, I think what you wanna do is be looking at the Fair Housing Act. You want to be looking at the Fair Housing Act. When you admit that, yes, somebody with a disability can't get into any of our units, you've just handed somebody a strong cause of action against your company. In fact, the Fair Housing Act says the first level has to be accessible to people with disabilities, if you choose to build without elevators.
Can you tell me?
And then I have some comments on the specifics of the staff report, which, and you guys did a great job on that, of course. I don't think that they meet the three requirements for recognizable benefit, preservation of significant natural features, which you give them credit for, wrong, I don't see it. They're knocking down the trees, so they don't get that, they only score two there out of the three they have to score. If you look at the modification of minimum requirements, you, you get into the exact same thing in that situation. Again, preserve the best natural features of the, of the site, they need that to get their four. They're not doing that. So they'd only have three there, even if you're very generous with them. And then density bonus, you know, like I said, it's, it's not exactly a bonus here, it's like a, well, it's, what is it when it's bigger than a bonus? I mean, there, you know, it's a, there, you have to have three of them, and the cool roof, great, low-impact, I don't know about that. At the best, they score two out of the three necessary there. They don't meet the basic statutory requirements, it's too dense. And as I think was pointed out, you have the discretion to simply say, "You're stuffing too much in there. Come back to us with something that is actually more suitable for this situation." And I think they can do that. They've, they've shown us that they're professionals, I think they can go sharpen their pencil and bring you something that actually serves our community.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Wendy DeLong, I live at 135 East Davis Street, and I was sworn in. Yes. I live across the street from Jerry, and when I sit and drink my coffee and look at Jerry's house, I will see a giant apartment building looming over He and Joyce's homes. It does not have character, it does not fit in with our neighborhood, it's way too large, it's not considerate of the people who are there. You're leaning in to a residential neighborhood when there's all this campus space. I mean, this, this is a moment for Yellow Springs. I think the writing is beyond on the wall for Antioch. But we're leaning out into an established neighborhood instead of leaning into what's there. What is the address of the property?
125.
But you're coming into President, you're coming into Davis and Whitman. It just doesn't make sense, it's terrible for the people that live there. And if, I, I have not even been there a year. Had that monstrosity been peering over my neighbor's house, I never would have bought the house I bought. So please, consider where you are, consider the space, consider the community, consider the character. And green space does not mean putting grass on someone's home on a map, it means trees. It means a divider between property, private property that's been there for years, and commercial property. And that's what this is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, would anyone else like to speak? Anyone who hasn't spoken? This is your opportunity. Yes, we have one more. Are you coming?
I came late, so I haven't been sworn in.
Okay, let me get my little swearing in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in matters before this board?
Yes.
Okay, then just tell us your name and address.
Well, my name is Joyce McDonald, and I live at 204 East Whitman, and I am possibly the person that will be most affected by this complex. My side yard is often used as a parking lot on street fair days, and like, like my neighbor said, it's going to be street fair 365 days a year. I'm 85 years old, so I don't have to be nice. The median age in Yellow Springs is 59 years old. The median age in my neighborhood is probably more like 65. We have a quiet residential neighborhood, and this development will destroy the value of my property and make my life hell on earth. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, if there's not anyone else, I'm gonna close, the public. If there's not anyone else, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I wonder, there was a question, I think a couple of questions came up for Windsor. One about how the student union will be torn down. And could you all maybe address that?
Sure.
Thank you.
So the student union will be torn down pursuant to a permit issued to Green County Building Department. We've torn down lots of buildings, you know, not like one or two, like 30. And so we do it in accordance with the law.
Okay.
Yeah, so you've got your lead abatement crews, you've got your
Yeah, I mean, so Windsor Construction is very, very, very vertically integrated. We hold, if you name the license, we hold all our MEP license, a DOT certification, HIC, GC. We have a sewer tapper's license. We have a lead abatement. We have a mold abatement. We have an asbestos abatement.
Because you'll probably need all of those.
That's right. That's right. And so we've torn down, I mean, we just tore down, we just tore down 10 buildings in Troutwood, Ohio, according to the law. We passed every single one of those, and so.
I want to speak to something about regarding the, you're remediating and removing the building.
Yes.
Not demolish, torn down. It's very, it's very specific and to specific permits that you have to get.
That's correct.
And I also want to remind everybody here what a huge liability the student union has become for the village and for the campus. We've had kids who have gotten into the building. So this part of the project is important to the community for not only removing a blighted building, but removing a health and safety hazard from the community that so far hasn't been done yet. So I wanted to speak to that because that's critically important. There's friable asbestos in there. There's lead pipes in there. There's all manner of mold. So this is, this is really an important, this is really an important thing that Windsor is also doing.
In Troutwood, and you guys can look it up, it's a complex called Maison Hills, all in which have the exact same issues there. We passed all our RAPCA certifications. We've passed, all 10 buildings are torn down. We passed, and we plan to do the exact same thing here.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question for Alex.
Yes, sir.
If that's okay. A couple people brought up another issue about dumpsters and mail delivery locations and all that. The number of parking spaces that you've been indicating, does that, will, a location for dumpsters and for mail drop-off impact that? Or is it already incorporated into the overall design?
I believe it's incorporated. I haven't like zoomed in on every single issue, but it's incorporated in the plan. I mean, our architect, I don't think he thinks that. The, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to address that because it came up.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then I wanted to ask about, it was brought up about the safe school pathways. Who is in charge of that, looking at? Do you know, Meg?
Well, it's not really one person. I mean, the schools can address it, but we also play a role in that through Public Works with making sure that there's safe routes to school and like through sidewalk repair. We apply for grants. We plan to apply for a grant for some improvements in the summer, I believe, or preparing for it in the summer.
Okay.
And in some manner, it's sometimes the act of transport gets involved.
Well, I hope that safety program works with the children. Some of the adults that ride their bikes around town, fresh, of course, they'll blow through stop signs and stop lights. And I've almost hit a couple just because they just do that on their own, so hopefully it works for the children.
Okay. Other comments that committee members want to make? You know, I wanted to mention for, I think Ellis brought up about preserving the natural features of the site. I didn't, I didn't feel like that was applicable, that I didn't, because I don't think there are any natural features to preserve. So I don't, I know when we
They're preserving the nothing?
Yeah, well, I know when we've had other ones, many times, that hasn't been applicable.
So is the public hearing open or closed?
It's closed.
Okay, okay. So are we, I think we should probably stick to this discussion between us then? Is that correct? Or if we want to ask?
They can ask questions.
Okay. But then they need to come up here to the mic. Okay. I just want to clarify.
And this wasn't in your finding?
Yeah, that they've identified that as one of the things that they're satisfying as a criteria for modifications, I believe. Yes, preserving natural features on the site.
Okay. Did you all want to address that, or is that something you can't address? Sure.
Well, I think it's important to remember that there's a blighted and unsafe building there today.
And you do get credit for getting rid of a blighted site.
It will be replaced by those two, obviously they're the housing units, but there's still going to be two park-like spaces for residents in the, in the community. So I think really what we're doing is we're taking what is clearly an unsafe part of the community today, adding the apartment units, but also having green space there. Now, I think there's been reference to our cutting down ton of trees. That's just not factually correct. I don't know how the number 30 came up, but there are not 30 trees that will be cut down. In fact, every effort will be made to preserve what is there, but what is there is limited, and what is there is unsafe. We'll look to remove what is unsafe and create housing for families and young professionals and preserve green space to the extent possible. Thank you.
Real quick, before you leave, so will you, will you be using our tree committee, or would you consider having them consult with you on the trees?
Absolutely.
Because they're well-trusted. Remember when some trees disappeared and everyone was freaking out, and it was like, no, the tree committee signed off on this. It's like, okay. And everyone kind of told them, and I think that might help.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
So before you go, let me just ask a question. The economics of this, you know, you've got your, what is, 128 units? Does this, you know, and can I even ask a question about like what they would do, like alternatives to this? Or are we done with alternatives? It's this or nothing?
You can ask.
Yeah, you can include in your recommendation modifications to council?
Okay. Well, I just, I just want to get a sense of, like, so, you know, I mean, what Ellis had said was, you know, the sort of sentiment here is that this is a sort of a, maybe bigger than what the site or the neighborhood would, it isn't like they don't want to have an apartment building there. It's that they are sort of fearful about the size of this project. Does this project work with less apartments? Or is it, like, the economics of it are 128 is, you know, what you need?
It's a good question.
You can't take off the top floor or something like that.
Yeah, I'm happy to address it. And we've spent a little bit of time discussing this with Meg in the context of some other, some other items, but it's a financeability thing. I think the plan that we put in front of you today, as I mentioned in my closing remarks, is one that, you know, we believe we can effectuate. Doesn't really serve us or you to waste your time putting a plan in front of you that we don't think we can, we can finance. This isn't a return on equity question. This is a construction lending question. You know, I think we've spoken to a lot of our experience here tonight and in our conversations with the capital markets, there are certain costs that we're going to incur no matter what, whether we build 50, whether we build 75, whether we build 128 units. There isn't, it's not purely a variable cost question. There are costs that will be, that will be incurred no matter what the density is. This is really what we believe is the most financeable case in order to bring this housing to bear. If we do do less, it'll become much more of a challenge, and we'll probably be unable to secure a bank loan.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Well, I have to say for me, having listened to everybody, having looked at it, I used to live in, well, I live not far from that neighborhood. I ride my bike through it all the time. I used to live closer. It is too dense for me. 128 units is too big. It looks like, although it is four stories, although I guess it's like three and a half stories, that seems too big to me. Not having at least one and a half parking spaces for every unit, really, you know, I don't think I could support that. I love that you're going to have affordable units there, because I want affordable units. But I don't think that this fits into the character of our community. I think you, you know, I loved other things you built, but I wouldn't want to see them here in Yellow Springs. And when I look at that, I just, it just, to me, it doesn't fit into our town. That's how I feel.
Well, I got a different take on that one. I think the working-class people in this town deserve places to live. Yeah, they will.
It's your time for discussion.
No back and forth.
Yeah. What I'd like to mention
Let Scott talk. Is Scott?
Okay, excuse me. You know, Ellis, I love you, but you said that one thing about that project there over in Dayton in between all these manufacturing buildings. Well, that just hit me, hit a nerve with me, because that's working-class homes. I'm sorry, we all talk about, you know, people need to have these places. Well, the work class here is struggling. They can't move here and buy houses. The one thing that made Yellow Springs so special, maybe what made some of y'all want to, made people want to move here, was the fact if you walked into any restaurant or any place in town, there was a local there that knew things. You could just ask somebody anywhere. Most places, you know, they don't know, because all the locals had to leave town to go, go to work. I want our locals back. We spent too much time kicking things down the damn road after our industry left in the 90s. We didn't get no industry to move back in here until Cresco showed up. And we have done nothing with housing. And yes, now we're doing a big boom on it, but the report said all kinds of housing, not specific. Not everything's going to be affordable housing. But there is going to be, if you can get help, the people get help, they can have those apartments. People that can pay full price will pay full price. It's not perfect. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
I'm just, I'm just tired of fighting this fight for 10 years.
There's a certain contingency.
I'm sorry.
I just
Yes, go ahead. It's, it's hard.
I'd like to talk on just a few things. One, you're talking to somebody that owns thousands of units, thousands of units, just like what we're talking about. We did a feasibility, we do these feasibility studies based on parking. Let's call it 3,500 units that we took, and these are blended units. These are units like what you're seeing like today, all the way across the high-rise tower that we just finished called the Denault Downtown Dayton. Of those units, 0.83% of, 0.83 parking spaces per unit. That's what we've accomplished. That's really the statistics that people are using now. More people use transient than ever before. Of that, you can also go to, just about any Google will tell you that every single county on the 88 counties across Ohio is changing their code to increase density, to allow for working-class folks to live in areas they want to live in, because you can't build a home. This site, you can't build 14 units per acre and make it work financially. You'll never get it financed. You'll never get it built, and it's, it'll be just a wasteland with a, with a beat-up building on it. It's impossible. And so financially, I would propose that I could go back to the pencil and look and see if we cut off those lower-level units that everyone's so concerned about. So you would have about, I believe I did the math, at 96 units on that site. Parking would be at the 1.3. You would have the green space, everything would maintain the same. And so, so
And so it wouldn't be quite as tall either than
That's right. It would be, let's call it 40 feet, you know.
And the ground floor would be
ADA acceptable.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's a code requirement, so, you know, maybe I didn't make myself clear. So in the Ohio high-rise code, you do have a ratio that you have to make ADA compliant. We intend to do that. We would never be able to build a building. So you don't need to do that. That's an Ohio revised code thing. And if you guys would allow that, we would do that. When you talk about parking, you know, it's funny, out of all those units, I look at this, I look at this opportunity, like, there's tremendous amount of parking. I didn't go to Antioch College, I don't know, but I'm guessing there's quite a few folks that parked off-street when this was a campus and it was highly, you know, when it was used at a
Oh, yeah.
And I, I would think this would be, I mean, I know a lot of folks got up and talked about how crazy this is going to be, just bananas. And we build these everywhere. We have 700 units going up this year. I want to, I, yes, I'm from old towns. And I want to make that work. I want, I want to work with you folks, but we have to work within the confines of what we can actually possibly do, that is financeable. So that's, that's what I propose. I wanted to say that. And I didn't come here to refute parking. I didn't come here to refute, I came here because we want to build something with you guys. And the parking issue, I urge every single one of you, I didn't do it, I started to bring it, but I was going to bring a lot of code, a lot of folks that already, they redid all of their, they did an overlay across the entire county, Licking, Franklin, Marion. I mean, I could have brought them all. They, they changed the code to allow for this type of parking, because reality is, people can't afford more than one car and an apartment. That's just the way it is. And that's what we're trying to bring to you guys. And so we want to maximize this site because it's a beautiful site. This is a beautiful, beautiful place to live. It would be a travesty to put 14 units per acre on here to, because there's nowhere else to be, 14 people? I mean, how many people want to live in Yellow Springs? I know that's, I, I can't tell you how many folks came up to us and said, everybody wants to come back here. We got calls nationally that said, we want to be a part of this development. You know, what we're proposing, I, I don't mind to take those off if that'll get this done, and that's what I'll propose, so.
So you're proposing 96 units?
Yes, ma'am.
Proceedurally, I believe that's going to mean we need to table this
Yeah.
And bring another preliminary plan review in front of planning commission, because it's going to be a different plan. We have no other way to run it through a public hearing here without bringing that amended plan back. Did you hear that? It's 120.
Truly not a different plan to planning as far as unit count is, but the buildings are exactly the same. Everything else is the same.
It won't change any footprint?
No. Just want to have both, like, because it's, you'll walk straight into the building.
The parking will be exactly the same.
It'll change the height, it'll change the height deviation.
So if planning commission makes the recommendation with agreement to lower to three stories, 96 units, and that's the recommendation that goes to council, and council is able to see a revised preliminary plan, does that
Would you have a public hearing before council?
Yeah.
It's a first reading and a second reading, but the second reading is the public's 96.
Yeah.
We could have it by the first reading. We have a schedule for June 2nd.
I think it needs to come back to planning for another preliminary
It has to come back. And I guess is the rest of the planning commission supportive of that? Is that Right, but does it, but, but I feel like it has to come back for a new, or does not, it does not?
I, I feel as though it needs to come back to planning commission for another preliminary plan review.
Yeah, I told you
With this 96
I'm telling you, it's on the table, we're still talking.
It's going to change the height of the building. It does, it's going to change Meg's analysis slightly. Can you do that for next month then?
Yeah, it seems like technically these are small changes, and it'd be a handful of slides changing, and it shouldn't be hard to pull together.
But procedurally, to follow the process of our code, we need to come, it needs to come back before planning. Otherwise, we're taking, we're not taking it through the full, the full robust review. So then that brings us to the question of whether we need them to withdraw this application
and resubmit, or table this and bring an amended. Megan, I'm going to leave that to you.
I'd like to table it instead.
Well, planning commission has the ability to request modification.
And request additional information and additional materials.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'd just say table it and look it in, yeah.
When you say table it, and for us to follow up, is that a conditional approval subject to your review?
It isn't, it isn't. It's going to be another review, just like this, in front of this commission. And we also need to address, so you technically have two requests before the commission tonight. One, to rezone the site to PUD, and two, for the preliminary plan approval. Planning commission, like they did on the other buildings, is making two recommendations to council. So to keep the trains on the track together, I suppose the easiest approach would be to table both and not move a, rezone onto council? Again, I'm going to refer to you on...
Yeah, it makes it seem easier. Yeah, I don't want to suffer it.
Okay, so then both of those would be tabled at this point to be picked up again at the next planning commission meeting with a different plan?
I have a question, so they're separate. So we, we cannot vote on the PUD?
You could vote on the rezoning, on a recommendation of rezoning. That's why I was just asking, Meg. But I think for, I think it would be procedurally easier to keep, for this building, to keep the two steps together, and not, not send either recommendation to council on this, on this application. And, but then we are going to have union and catering are going to be...
No, I don't think it's a problem to offset them. I think it's clear, actually.
Yeah, so it's all going to come back to planning commission? This, this application is going to come back to planning?
So are we looking at just tabling at this point? Tabling and amending it?
And if we do that, do we do it at date certain? So we don't have to do, we do a public notice again for 20 days?
If the applicant is amenable to that, I would do it for a day, I would do it.
And then could we do a date certain that's more close in like two weeks? For a special session?
As long as you're adequately noticing it, if you can get planning commission to agree to a special meeting, yes.
Would you guys be interested in a special meeting for this?
Yeah, I would try.
Now, what's your notice requirement on this, Meg?
It says 20 days.
20 days, right?
That's what it is. And we're going to... All right, so what do we move it toward here?
Do you guys feel okay with a special meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think planning is going to, the commission is open to doing this a little bit sooner than just waiting for the next meeting in June. It would, of course, have to be noticed appropriately to all of the neighboring properties. Yeah, every step still has to be taken again with the revised plan.
What is it, 20 days' notice?
It's a 20-day notice.
Whatever it is.
Yeah, so we could...
It's a mail notice.
The longest one of the neighbor notice is 20 days, the neighbors... So it would be June 2nd.
So to, more to come on that, to figure that out between, to be, between village and applicant, and the, and there will be plenty of public notice, too.
There'll be ZA June 4th. You can hear that saying after it.
I think we need at this point, probably just need a motion to table.
We need to do one?
Yeah.
A motion to table?
Okay. We need a motion to table this, and then to have the plan amended? Or just to table?
No, I think you can just table it. The applicant's going to bring the amended plan. So, and I would make two motions. One, to table the rezoning, and one, to table the review of the preliminary plan.
Okay, first, I'll make a motion to table the rezoning.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Okay, and then we will, I will make a motion to table the preliminary development plan.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Okay, it's been tabled. And so we're looking at any special meeting?
Potentially a special meeting, potentially the meeting in June. More to come on that. And I do expect that the commission will reopen public hearing for the next, for the next review.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate you willing us to modify your plan.
Just on the...
Do we have any old business?
Okay, so catering pass, we're good.
Thank you.
Any new business?
No.
No?
We really appreciate the effort that you guys have put into this. And the flexibility. Thank you for, you know...
Thank you for coming. Excuse me, sorry. Just one second, we're almost done.
We need to adjourn. Is there, if there's no other business, I move, we adjourn? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.